Kelly, can I ask you a process question?
Yeah.
Under Board of Selectmen, what's that?
Everybody.
It's police, fire.
No, 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 under D right here.
D right here.
Oh, that is, that's everything else.
And that's.
It's under you and us.
And that we have in board docs.
And I'm just gonna go through the highlights of what the changes are and then I can give you more details later.
So, I don't wanna be obtrusive.
We can do it like in five minutes. Very quick.
Because we have three things left and only an hour and this sometimes has to be a little too.
We can get through it real quick.
Okay. I'll hold you to that.
One time.
Go.
Go, first one. Town Hall budget, under the Board of Selectmen. This represents our electricity, our gas, repairs and maintenance.
There's a little thing in board docs. There's a little arrow up in this area here, so it's one arrow up and one arrow down.
That's fine.
Just click on that.
The fee is five thousand more, right?
And they all slip, they all flip.
Electricity's five thousand. It's fine, I can do it on my laptop, but I can't do it on this one.
Right, oh.
Should be up on the right maybe?
Well, this one didn't have anything on it.
Are you on board doc?
Oh, yeah. See, I can't do it on my iPad though.
No, see that, I opened this up and it's a little different. No, I don't see it there. That might be it right there.
Thirty-five?
No, that isn't doing it?
Thirty-five hundred?
How are you doing on the?
All right, well, this doesn't count on our, on our time. Sorry.
We're wasting too much time.
I know.
Town Hall budget.
All right, so the town hall budget has like, as you know, it has a lot of budgets in there. It starts with the moderator, it goes into Selectmen, other ones. So, I'm just trying to guide you. We're only gonna hit on a couple of the ones that have some, something that you should look at.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Town Hall budget, electricity. We need, we're estimating another five thousand dollars. We've doubled the square footage. That is our best guess. We do think however, that gas will be able to maintain at a no increase. Call it energy efficiency or whatever, but we didn't see that much of a major impact. So that was, that was good. Repairs and maintenance, and also, that, we actually proposed that we would increase that by fifty percent, which equals thirteen thousand dollars. The rationale for that is that we have to go back out to bid for our cleaning contract. So because we have twice as much square footage, it's twice as many floors to mop and furniture to dust and so, we assume that a fifty percent increase would cover any of the unknowns that we don't know but gives us enough of a buffer so that we can, yes.
Also is that everything is warranted for a year in here and our warranty is over in September, so we'll have sixty-seven months that we join into some maintenance contracts and agreements for some of the items here, say ambient or whatever. This gives us that opportunity to fill that gap. The potential of it.
Telephone expenses will go up about thirty-five hundred dollars. And all of these things I'm listing right now are basically the items that will be putting on those exceeds guideline sheet. And so we'll prepare a memo, we're explaining some of the background. And then our maintenance in, on the computer, maintenance computers, will go up eleven thousand. That pretty much represents thirty-five hundred dollars for board docs. That's based on the light version. And then also, there's some other increases regarding some of the new software. I think we have FOIA Direct. We have, Munis is going up three percent. So all of those items we will summarize, but the total, the total net total impact is an additional eleven thousand dollars. I consider all of those expenses to be nondiscretionary. That they are what they are and we don't have much control. We can't under-budget for those or else we'll have to call a special center meeting the middle of the year and that isn't wise. Our best hope is that there are some things we don't know, but yet, we believe that the increases that are listed here will give us a sustainable foundation to move forward in that town hall budget. For insurance, okay, so the bad news is that, no, the good news is that property liability has been guaranteed a zero increase to our premium rate for two years. The bad news is that sixty-five thousand dollars is going to be added to our premiums because of a few different things, obviously. Town Hall, we've doubled the footprint. We have improved the schools, they were previously undervalued. I think the value shift was about ten million dollars between the two schools. And of course, we have the water treatment plant coming on. So all of those things added together effectively, and this is the best guess, we met with our insurance agent. She said that that would cost about sixty-five thousand dollars as an estimate. Now, the good news however, is that last year, or that maybe, yeah, last year when we were able to, to offset that sixty-five thousand, what we're going to be able to do though, is because we renegotiated the 111F coverage. We had that in the budget for 146 and that was based on a budget, a budget philosophy that you would take the prior year's budget and you would add a percentage to it. What we did is we renegotiated the 111F benefit with Maya. They realized that we were being over, not overcharged, but they weren't accounting for the fact that our one reserve officer that was injured many years ago, that we have been paying heavily for that for some time. Good news is, is that he has severed his claim with the town, so he's no longer in our policy. But also, what they did is they went back and they reevaluated our policy, our utilization, and they came back with a bid of closer to seventy-five thousand dollars. The bottom line is that we will save sixty-five thousand dollars from that renegotiation. So that effectively pays for the increase in the liability. So that's pretty much a wash between those two items. So that's, that's great news as far as I'm concerned. The only other bump will be the workers' comp for about five thousand dollars. Again, another nondiscretionary item from my opinion. The bottom line is that we've, we've just saved sixty-five thousand dollars. We've added sixty-five, but then we've reduced it. Our health insurance is, of course, that is actually a piece of information that the treasurer has, but I just wanted to let you know what our assumptions are for this initial budget pass. Health benefits are projected, we had a projection in the last year's forecast of thirteen percent based on our worst case scenario. We then revised that to be ten percent to be a little bit more in line with our plan design changes. Since that point in time, we've confirmed with our Maya agent that the trend for right now is about six and a half percent. And he feels that it's safe for us to assume at this early point in the process that we can assume that six and a half would be the right number to put into the budget. That effectively represents about a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in increase. That is a big number, however, what we need to understand too is that we've gone two years with no increase. So the fact that we're at six and a half percent is in a single-digit increase is very good. And we would hope that as they announce the rates at the MMA meeting, that hopefully we can shave that down a little bit as well. So, but for right now, the number we've put into our budget projection is basically amounts to a hundred thirty-six thousand dollar increase over last year's budget. We will save a little bit of money, we're adding in some Medicare tax, there's an addition there, but that's being offset. There are a couple of administration fees and HR inpatient hospital funds that we've taken off the books. So that'll help cushion the health insurance change. We had put aside a mitigation fund for about six thousand dollars a few years ago when we wanted to design, redesign, plan, design with the groups. Only a few people opted, if any, to take advantage of that. So what we're doing is instead of keeping it at six thousand, we're gonna reduce that to two thousand because legally we do have to have a mitigation fund of some sort, but we certainly did need to use the six thousand, so we reduced that to the two. And so that, oh, and the Essex retirement, well, effectively, I think there's a difference of about ninety-six thousand dollars in there for Essex retirement. Nondiscretionary, it's our assessment, we don't have a choice, they gave that assessment to us and that also anticipates that we are going to pay it on July first and so we don't have to pay extra for any mid-year interest costs. So ninety-six thousand represents the increase of the cost. That is a slight, that is a significant jump from last year, I would say about eight and a half percent. But I believe that hopefully next year we can see their projection is that it'll go down slightly for next year. So that's a, hopefully a one-year blip. Well, they give us, they give us, right, they do give us an outlook of what the plan will look like in the next few years. So it shows a big, a little bit of a jump this year, but the next year it starts to go down a little tiny bit. It won't be as high as eight and a half is my point, next year. It's not gonna stay at that higher level. It'll, it'll tend to maybe go down, I wanna say maybe it was a six, six percent range, but I can get you more information on the pension number. But anyway, that, that's sort of a summary of the employee benefits. The only other last item that I wanted to mention to you, and this of course I would, is the PEG cable fund. As you know, we collect, you know, the money from everyone's cable bills, it comes into a fund, it's a separate fund. Because of the Muni mod bill, we had to set up, we had to set up a new budget and appropriation system for that. So, so it's sort of a self-sustaining model. I've added a thousand dollars in the PEG, the PEG budget to allow for legal expenses related to our notice to enter into agreement or enter into new renewal agreement for our current contract. So at the end of FY, or maybe mid-FY twenty, we might have to be sitting down with them again to start the negotiation process. I just wanted to put at least some money in there as a cushion so that we can have those negotiations and not have to rely on the general fund to pay for those expenses. The other piece is, I'm, I'm actually proposing and I'm open to your thoughts on this, but I was proposing that we could add maybe two and a half hours, about four thousand dollars to that PEG fund to help offset some of the needs that we have with regard to the town's website. As you know, you can access the cable, we use our website to access our cable, our YouTube and the cable. So we are able to, what I was hoping that we could do is utilize at least maybe two and a half, on an average, two and a half hours a week of someone's time to effectively help us out with some of the things that we've been talking about with regard to the website. So because we do access that cable and the YouTube and all those services through our website, we would be able to offset a portion of those expenses to the PEG fund. So it's a separate fund, but that was one thought that I had, that we could use another self-sufficient fund to help us to start to crack into that, the realm of the website management issue. I thought two and a half hours would be enough for us to perhaps talk about having someone from the outside or even a part-time employee who might be willing to do some of that work. So those are two of the things that I was going to be proposing. I think we are going to get a zero increase from Boxer Cable Television for next year's assessment from them for their cable services. So, everything else being level, we're really talking about an additional five thousand dollars over last year's budget. What we do is we would appropriate the money under Article Third, but there's an offset under Article Second. We would transfer the money in from the PEG fund in Article Two and then we would appropriate it under Article Three. So that's pretty much just a wash, a wash through. But that was one way indirectly that we would be able to help to support some of the goals of the board in terms of trying to address some of our website initiatives.
We haven't had a chance to talk yet.
Yeah.
I have, and I don't know if it's, if we're talking the same thing, but I have a request to be looked at by everybody, but just to get in there for a discussion.
Yeah.
Five thousand dollars right for the improvement to the website.
Okay.
You guys can vote it down, but I want it, I'd like it in there to discuss it. I'm doing some preliminary discussions and trying to pull together a protocol on how we go about getting them up so that we want to. And I've been told by the company that does it that, and there's, looks like there's quite a bit we can do at veritably low cost ourselves. Only if there's a really significant restructuring that we need to do that professionally, like worst case within what we're talking about, I've been told five to seven thousand dollars and it's not gonna be the seven because we're not gonna do that much.
And that would be one time, right?
Yeah. But I would just like it in there so we can talk about one another. I don't know, this is one of those opposite things, I don't know.
It could be, perhaps. Yeah. Okay, that, that represents basically all of the delta from the regular budgets that we have. Everything else is within guidelines. I did, last year we didn't recommend a two percent increase to the stipends. We were being extra conservative last year, but given that we didn't do it last year, I recommended it for this year, we did put in two percent to the stipends that are already in existence. So that was, that was pretty much it.
Stipends for?
Stipends for animal control officer, animal inspector.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, tree warden. Seal, weights and mentors.
Staying at this, this level, and I appreciate us staying at the top level. What about, there's, there's just some talk about that we may need more professionals and then, and I appreciate it, and God bless, and the two kids sitting in the corner.
Yeah.
For our meetings. Is that within what you're talking about to at least explore that or?
We will be exploring that before we renew our next contract with Boxer Cable Television.
I have a real pet peeve about that.
I do too.
I think we're paying Boxer a significant amount of money for that service. And we're getting two high school kids to sit there and do their homework.
Okay, but it's not a, but it's not a budgetary thing for right now, it's in the corner.
We're trying to keep our own time. Well, it's, it's, it's a good point, but I don't wanna look a gift horse in the mouth and say, eh, you know.
I don't know.
I think, I think there's ways we need to step up our cable.
We may not have a backup.
If, if we're paying for it, it's not a gift horse.
Well, if those kids don't show up, then we're begging someone else to do it.
We don't need friends, we need somebody that can move the camera.
I know. I agree. Maybe, maybe we can hire Dick.
Well, it's in the meeting.
Dick, how would you like to work for Boxer Cable Television?
As long as I can do it during the meeting.
You know, the, yeah. They also have systems, costly stuff.
His camera doesn't move either, so.
Yeah, you can get the systems and they're not super expensive where if we have microphones in front of us, the camera goes to the microphone that's being listened to.
Yes, and, and, and just so you know.
They are buying new equipment.
They're buying new equipment, we're installing it, we're gonna have a camera in the back, a camera in the front, and I will definitely be asking.
I've got a bunch of people that want to know when that's gonna happen.
I will tell you, it's coming in early January.
There you go.
So the server and the camera and all, it's.
So, the material that kind of went through is gonna, it's in these D1, B2 sheets, whatever. We'll get copies of that stuff.
Everything's in there.
The thing I'm having trouble looking at.
Yes, sorry.
By the way, the thing is circling, it's like not loading them up, that's why it is in there.
Oh, my bad.
I can't get mine.
I think the link is.
I'll try to load it a little differently.
I was gonna say, if you can put your horizontal format.
When I put them in, when I put them in and I look them at my computer, my desktop, there's a little circle at the top right corner, you just click on it and it turns it for you.
There you go.
But on the iPads, I don't think it's working. Because I haven't had access to that.
No, I thought I had mine.
I'm gonna try it a little different way.
Like, there's only two other things and I think at least one of them needs to be done today. Right?
I had one more. So you gave us the information about the software and it's a big number, a hundred and fifty thousand whatever. Can you just provide one sheet, maybe a spreadsheet that just has each of the items?
Yeah.
And last year and this year, so, because you mentioned, you know, this one is new, but this one is up.
Yeah.
If we just had that, because it's a big number and we may get a lot of questions on that.
I intended to do that under item number seven.
Asking who shall receive.
That's in there too, by the way.
That's in there.
Thank you.
Dick, that's, Dick, Dick.
Thank you.
Dick, it's in your packet.
It's in your packet, yeah. It's on the computer.
I am with this handle. I can't keep the thing from waiting, I gotta get this thing. Thank you all, I appreciate the cooperation. We have some, a great deal of time and effort is going into development of our town hall public policies.
Oh boy.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go through this fairly quickly though.
By the way, this is on the agenda for the seventh.
That's for the formal vote. This was to share.
Okay, for the formal vote, good.
Right.
I read, I read the whole thing and I think it's very well figured out.
Thank you.
Lynn did a great job.
No, the three of us did it. A good job. Okay, so just the high points here. Before we said we were gonna approach this in three phases. So the first was the policy, we went through that, but we have a couple of recommended changes. And then second, we were gonna put the application together. And then third, all the back office procedures to make it happen, okay? So going back to the beginning, the policy, what changed from when we last had you look at it? We got feedback from legal, took a while, took several months, but we got their feedback. So we incorporated that. They were just wording changes, so we didn't identify everything for you, we just gave you the new contract. But there was one substance change they did make and that was to the tiers. So what they did is, if you remember the old tiers, we had tier C, or the third tier down, was anyone from Topsfield, private or commercial, you were in that third tier. And then two tiers down from that was people out of town, if you were a private function or commercial. What they said is that there was case law that showed that we should not discriminate and put commercial over anything non-commercial. There's a lot of background to it.
Regardless of residency.
Yeah, so whether you're in Topsfield or outside of it. So what we did is we plucked the commercial out of the third category and out of the fifth and we made its own. So commercial is at the bottom now and we don't have to worry about any discrimination charges, commercial versus non-commercial. So there's a lot of discussion about that, but it didn't have to tweak that much, that was the one change. The other change that we uncovered from putting the procedures together was that we changed when you had to make payment. So before, we said you had twenty days to get back to us with the signatures, with the insurance binder and whether or not we needed any police or fire, they had to track that down. What we found is that there are gonna be a lot of cases where they don't need a police detail or a fire detail. So it's much more efficient to get payment at the time they give us the application. And only if they need fire or police later on, at the end of those twenty days, do they have to come back in and make a second payment to us. So this is a lot more streamlined and it also shows commitment on the part of people that if they're willing to pay. So those are the only two substance changes, everything else is just wording. So you can take a look at the policies.
I would a lot rather have us owe them money than them owe us money.
Yeah, so you know, it's hard, it's a lot more work for Donna, she has to chase people down and make phone calls and, and we want people to come in, we don't wanna discourage anybody, but this is a cleaner way to do it. So the second document that you have in here is the actual application. And I did cut a little tree, because I have my own copies here, just so I can hold it up, so you don't have to go through here. But this application was reviewed by everybody who is impacted by it. So the fire chief, the police chief, you know, everybody who's listed here, Board of Health, looked at it, gave their input, and we've used it for five soft openings with the COA. So we feel that we've collected all the information that need be. And on the second page is a waiver that they have to sign and this was approved by legal. So legal signed off on the, the application. The third part is the procedures, and if you have any questions about them, Donna's here willing to answer them. But we gave you the documents just to show you that she has thought through every step of the process. So from the time that someone gives her an application, there's a spreadsheet where she's gonna collect all the information so we can do analysis of who's renting, how much are they paying us, et cetera. There's a letter that goes back out to the people confirming the date that you requested and reiterating the steps they need to take, like getting the application with signatures back in twenty days. So it's a nice formal way to just solidify that you've got that date and to let them know if they don't come back within twenty days, we release the hole and we open it up to other people. So, and then there is a checklist for public hall procedures that Donna put together and it's all the different steps that she has to take. So the people who are renting, they don't see this at all, but it's her way of making sure that everything is covered and she has everything that she needs before they proceed. And there's a room assessment report, one of the things that Donna is asking for the person who sets up and dismantles the room, as well as the renter, that they sign off on the sheet. So there's a little picture of the room, it's a schematic that you can see in here. And they are going to indicate, similar to if you rent an apartment, you know, you walk around and you say, oh, there's a gouge on the wall, I didn't do that. So they're going to sign off to say this is the condition of the room, if they see anything that's out of whack. And then the setup person will reconnect with them at the end of the night and if for some reason someone kicked a hole in the wall, he's gonna circle it and say there's a new hole in the wall at the end of the night and they can sign to say, I agree, that happened during our event. We don't think that this is really gonna come into play often, but it, it covers both sides. So, that's a nice thing.
Not a bad idea.
Nice thing to have. Okay, so those are the backup documents that Donna is maintaining. Do you guys have any questions on those for Donna at this point?
No.
See, I have a binder.
And she has an official binder.
I have a binder which will have all the policies and it has a little one through twelve and I can put the events and carry it through what happens in each month. If you ever wanna look at it, feel free to stop by.
Abby already wants to rent her one.
I know, yeah.
Has she talked to you?
No, not yet.
She talked to me.
Oh, yes.
I said it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Oh, I'll get that.
We also have a theater group that's interested in coming in. And so we said you have to wait until the, the board has voted, but. So then we had five soft openings with the council on aging and we tried to get them to run through everything that we wanted to have tested. And on that sheet, there are a couple of things that we could not test. One, I could not get them to have any alcohol. They were adamant they were not gonna have alcohol, so we did not test the alcohol procedure at all. And there was no snow.
No money either.
And there was no money either. But just about the money, Donna and Kelly have worked with Catherine to identify the account that the money goes into, the account that it comes out of to pay for the setup and cleaning. And at town meeting, they're gonna put something forward to create a revolving account to make it cleaner. So we've got a way to make it work right now.
That's a perfect use for revolving right now.
We were actually gonna do that last year, but we, there's a Muni mod bill that just came out that said, it was talked about rental of facilities. And then when we actually drilled down and you read all the fine print, it said that's only for public buildings that you're renting out, like on a permanent basis. Or, you know, it didn't apply to temporary or one-time events. So we thought that that would have been the perfect solution, but it's not. So we have a way to, you know, get us through the rest of the year and then we'll do the revolving fund for a town meeting.
One of the other areas we couldn't test is using the Procter overflow lot because the one night that they needed it, there was an event going on at Procter. So according to the procedure, we checked with Jen over at Procter and she said, no, we have events. So we said, that's fine, we'll let our people know that they can't park there. But there is a map that they would like us to send out with a letter if the parking lot is going to be used, so people know exactly where to park and not try to sneak behind, so it's a quick walk to the town hall. So that would go in.
Is the concept on the revolving fund that if it results in excess profit, I don't know where it went, and that that will stay in the account or be used for all itself?
Then there are various ways to set it up, but that's our intent.
For painting, reflooring, new curtains, things could, you could save any excess if we collect some, so I hope we will. And it will go directly to things that relate to the name.
And it doesn't require further appropriation.
Exactly, it just stays there as long as it's spent.
We need to, you know, get the floors refinished or fix the wall. We can do that without waiting for a town meeting to happen, because you can use a revolving fund for that.
It also means if there were damages and so, they would be paid into it too.
Donna?
Us. Our facility coordinator, the facility manager.
I noticed she got a new title today. That's what she needs.
So we have commercial in here, I just understand, is commercial by definition profit, for profit?
Yes, okay.
Yes, you.
Okay, because we had a discussion about whether we wanted to include the for profit and we do.
You know, I would recommend that we do. We have all the procedures in place, there's no difference to us whether or not they have charged to have the people attend the event. But we put in here that we can have the board relook at the policies so if we find for some reason it's not working, we'll change that. Yeah. Okay, so after looking at the soft openings, the next thing that we put together was a communication plan. Because one of the things that the lawyer, our legal counsel, did say is that we have to be fair in letting people know about the availability at the hall. So everyone has to be notified basically at the same time. So in, one of the documents that was in here was what we were proposing to do as far as the website or sending out articles or using the school newsletters about the elementary and high school, et cetera.
What's the Facebook, yeah, what's that all about?
We can post to the residents of Topsfield.
Residents of Topsfield, that was the question, okay.
Yeah, actually, we did not put that on our list, only because sometimes there is a lot of dialogue that ensues from that page and we thought, we have many other vehicles, so we're not proposing to use Facebook right away.
But we're not using Twitter either.
Yeah, because we don't kinda Twitter.
You can't do that stuff unless you have someone that owns full-time.
Yeah, no, I know.
Monitor.
Yeah, yeah. And so we stayed away from the social media and we stayed away from doing any articles outside of the tri-town. We just wanted to get our own area under control before we started to expand it. One of the things that Kelly and Donna are working on is the website itself. So they have a markup, so there will be a tab on our website so that you can click it, it'll say Hall Rental.
It says public hall rental.
It's already there, actually.
It's already there and it has, it says coming soon on the left-hand side, on the blue, on the main thing. It's a little tab on the bottom. And then on the bottom, it, there's a calendar, it says rental hall calendar, so you could, somebody could event, go look and see if the date they wanted was, was open.
Trying to reduce the number of calls coming into Donna, so this way people can check themselves and a lot of people may be thinking about it at night and on the weekend and they can just go right online to see if the date is open. And the information onto the side, when you click on it, will bring you to the policies and the application. So everything will be.
Once you vote, then we'll put them up. Once you guys vote it, we'll put them up. Once you guys vote it, we'll put them up.
So the calendar, is there a way for a potential person to find out if it's?
Yes.
Yes, that's what the calendar does.
So at the bottom, it's the calendar on the bottom.
So right now.
It says somewhere in there, "Check the calendar."
Yes.
Yeah. Right now, the only thing that's in there, I believe, are all the COA events. We wanted to load those up, because they're every week at the same time, before anybody else comes in and assumes that that's an open time. So we would recommend, based upon all of that, a vote to approve at the January 7th meeting. We'll present this briefly, and then vote to approve what we have here for the application and the policies. I don't think we need to vote on what Donna's procedures are, because those are back office. But I think at least the two documents that will be going out on the website and visible, and that we'll be using. And then we'll begin to implement that marketing plan to communicate with everybody. We really would suggest that we hire that acoustics engineer, I don't know where that stands.
The building committee's got that information.
Town Hall Building Committee meets on January 2nd, and I have talked to Kelly, and we can secure the finances for that, the funding of it. So I will, at that meeting, tell them, and they can vote to move forward with the survey and to move forward with that.
And there might be some grant opportunities, the Mass Cultural Society. Yes, Donna, the article she sent showed they spent over a hundred thousand they need to PBD to help redo their hall with the acoustics, actually. And the speakers, et cetera. So they're actually going to be at the MMA conference, so we could reach out and see. But it's good, once we have that study, to know what it is we're asking for specifically. And then we would be conducting a monthly review just to assess the items that weren't able to be tested when it was in-house, depositing a check, issuing a refund, et cetera. And we would recommend starting to accept applications on January 28th. So that would be the first time that an application could be received by the office, and someone booked something. So that would give us a month to put the marketing plan into play, and let everybody know about this, and then start to accept them. So the events wouldn't be until probably the middle of February.
Couple of real big picture things, just to show our, around integrating. Someone walk out of the big shop, and someone says they want to rent the town hall, they tell them, "It's Dr. Don."
Yes, you can go onto the website and get an application and fill it out. Or you can go to Donna, she has hard copies, but Donna's one person.
And it's Donna.
Yeah, yeah. Not until the 28th, actually.
But regardless of the nature of the event, or who did you, it's Donna.
It's Donna.
You don't want to get into that.
No, I don't, I'm just complaining. Thrilled that you wanted another title.
No, I don't, wait a second. This is temporary, by the way.
But for, any individual organization can use it.
Yes.
If someone.
Except for fundraising, political fundraising.
Yeah, correct.
Outside of that, I know we talked about it, but some organization that maybe every one of us feels is offensive and awful, and so on and so forth, we have no ability to screen that out?
No, but we can, or the police chief can recommend additional details if they think it's something that could cause a safety concern for the town.
And so if the police chief determines that it's a safety or a danger, we still are obligated to rent it out?
Yes, because otherwise it's restricting speech.
Yeah. My criticism, I just want us to know.
But we can set standards for public safety, though.
With the police chief.
With the police chief.
Yeah, it's a very, potentially a very volatile situation.
Right.
What if, what if, I get them, there may be people who are big gun supporters in the internet, that's not my type, I just tend to think of this. What if a local gun club comes in, and we assume that people are carrying, although they're licensed?
I don't think they're allowed to carry in a public building, are they? That's a good question.
That's a police chief question.
Oh, I don't think.
If you have a license to carry.
If you have a license, you can carry.
I think you can, yeah.
You think you can?
You can't in schools.
Oh, I didn't know.
But there are very few that can serve in public buildings.
Well, I wonder if we can set our own policies relative to the town hall about guns that didn't.
What if there's guns coming in, I mean, if police chief would want, I suspect, want to have some extra security for the local.
And I'm not trying to go down around all that, just like, but at least the police chief would be involved.
Yes.
He has to sign off.
You can immediately call KBLR or something, about whether we could stop people from, whether we could do a no guns policy, or.
Yeah, the no guns, I don't know, that we can look into.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
But if somebody comes and has a conversation with me that I don't feel comfortable with what they're presenting to do up there, I can call the chief and say, "I really would like you to go to the chief," and then I'll call the chief first and say, "Everyone don't like what he said." I know that, but I could feel it out and have a turn as a.
And presumably, if people are serving, maybe get someone who wants to serve alcohol there. There's a policeman there.
If there's over 99 people, which is the policy throughout the town and for other venues.
And otherwise, it's just, if someone punches someone, and things get out of hand, presumably, they'll have cell phones.
Yeah, they'll call 911.
Right. And our alcohol policy is such that it has to be a TIPS-certified server. So you can't, you know, have Uncle Joe pouring the drinks at a place and wander away from the table, which is more restrictive than our one-day alcohol policy. It doesn't require TIPS-certified, but we're saying for the town hall, we do require it.
Would we consider taking the "commercial" off, and watch how everything goes, and then add "commercial" six months from now? It's like one more thing you have to add at the bottom.
What is the fear, what is the concern about having someone "commercial," like this theater group?
Like the theater group as a commercial?
The theater group coming in, I think, or are they a nonprofit?
Nonprofit.
Oh, they're a nonprofit, okay.
They'd be a nonprofit.
But if theater group could be.
One of the things that are commercial, if you think about everything, our costs are lower. If we're, we're not making money on it, we're not, if we do, then we have liabilities, but we're not.
No, we make money on certain first tiers.
We're turning into a breakeven, aren't we?
In the aggregate.
Break even plus.
In the aggregate, right.
Right. So the cost of the physical building, all of the asset things are not in there, and they shouldn't. So we're essentially competing with another "commercial" that's offering some of the same thing if they're available, I don't know. But it's just, it's certainly imbalanced, this is a given when you think about using government facilities for things. And so we're competing with regular profit businesses with, they've got their hand behind their back tied a little bit, we don't, so to speak. And so it's, I just wonder how fast and what might happen with it. It's just, I have, it's not a big deal, but I remember Mark was wanting to board it up at first, and I hadn't thought about it. And then I thought about it more, and I said, "Yeah, maybe it's better to just kind of wait on that one."
I'm still, I'm sorry, it's probably me, but I understand we are competing in a way. They're going to look maybe at Emerson and see what the cost is, the Gould Barn, they look at us, if they're looking in this area. But what's the problem to the town hall, what are we fearful about?
First of all, we opened it up to more potential people before we do a somewhat harder entry into it. We had a soft start, now we have a harder one, before we bring that in. And the second thing is, is that it may bring us to be very competitive, because our costs are less. And so start driving things where we wind up essentially not, I don't know what our rules are, but essentially driving out nonprofits, because these, once they're in, once they have the date, then a nonprofit couldn't get that date. Now, if they bid at the same time, then the nonprofit gets the advantage. It doesn't make much sense, because you have to give, we know how that works, we talked about it already. So it really has a potential of driving out some of the people who are interested in doing it.
If we see that happens.
The discussion's enough.
Yeah.
We just raised the rate.
Well, one thing, just to let you know, the fee that we're charging if someone comes in for a commercial event is $500. There's a good amount of money, I mean, that's a valuable client to have come in and rent.
Well, now you have to start thinking about, for the additional cost that you're giving them, how are we, it's one of two things, either, if everything else is equal, and we're charging that much more, then either they're breaking even at that much, and we're giving other people away things, or the other people are breaking even, and we're making money on the commercials. If we're making money, I think we want to be real careful about that, because of the liability that we incur.
What additional liability?
What liability? If somebody gets hurt, whatever happens, I know we have all those wordings there, but let me tell you, you still go to court.
You would for a private party.
Why is it, with commercials?
Yes, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you wouldn't, but, oh.
One of the nonprofit act is going to be when it falls off the state.
Same thing. No difference in liability.
It's a commercial factor.
And the legal counsel was not concerned about it, they were just concerned where they fell in the tiers, but they were fine with that, we're fine with that.
Thank you so much. You've done a great job.
Excellent, excellent.
Don't cool off too much.
By the way, I would tell you, let me tell you something. Joe Gibbons and I had a meeting yesterday with the people from Bandy at the Run that installed that stuff, to try to learn how they work. And you can see, but it was sitting freezing my ass off, we didn't accomplish very much, so we still don't know how it works.
Well, I don't know what it said at, and I.
The chief did it, it's her fault.
She probably put it down because she was happy.
I asked her to shut it off, and she didn't know. I've got about three minutes before the Finco, yeah. Can you, Debbie, real quickly, what's our January schedule?
January 7th, it's a regular meeting.
Yep.
Uh, I have a calendar for me.
Um, the.
Let me see, here.
Sure, I put this on my phone.
Seven, so seven, so the 7th and the 28th are both regular meetings. The 10th and the 24th are the work sessions.
Oh, it's not the 21st?
Other.
10th and the.
In January. No, the 21st is a holiday.
7th and the 21st are my.
The 21st is a holiday.
Holiday.
So the 7th and the 28th are regular meetings.
Say that again, please, so we can.
7th, 28th.
Yep.
The 10th and the 24th are the work sessions on Thursdays.
Go back to 3 o'clock, at least, I was.
Correct.
Okay, off the top of your head, what's the agenda for the January 10th work session?
Do I go on work, or do you tell them?
Lynn, I know I'm, I know I'm objective, I need to get the goals and objectives done, but I don't want to jump into them in two minutes, and do you mind if we do move into the January 10th?
That's fine, it won't be live in front of everybody if there was a concern about doing this in front of the town.
This was a work session.
It's a work session.
Well, we kind of decided we'd probably discuss it today, and then.
Yeah, so we're going to move that discussion to the 10th.
Okay.
And if we need to go, probably get the actions. Though, if we need to go in a regular meeting, it'll go after.
Okay.
I'm talking about Dr. Ben, because we just don't have the time.
Well, I totally understand, can we vote on this on the 10th, so that we could start to roll up?
Not even.
Well, you know, optimally, it would have been in front of a live audience on the 7th.
Let's think about whether we want to do it on a Monday night.
Yeah, I mean, it just pushes it off, but whatever you want to, you know.
All right, so can you please, the town administrators' goals and objectives on January 10th?
Sure.
Give us the legal right to vote on, I think we can anyway, but I don't think we have to be.
Okay.
But we may or may not, we're going to do that today, but we just don't have the time.
Yep, okay.
Okay. All right, so in that case, do you want to just buzz through minutes?
Yep.
Oh, I'm out of here. Yeah, great, I'm escaping.
Stay.
No, thanks, I've been there, done that, wait too many times.
We can give you another title if you say.
No, I have enough minutes, I take care of it. Okay, so the first one is the regular session for December 3rd. Thank you so much, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
I have none either.
First of all, move we accept as presented, the minutes of Monday, December 3rd, for regular Board of Selectment meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or revisions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
Next is going to be the regular, excuse me, the Board of Selectment work session minutes from Thursday, December 13, and move to have them accepted, 2018. I move to have them accepted as presented.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I know they're controversial, but, any discussion or revisions?
Uh, yeah. Well, I don't know, something happened. Uh. Huh. No, I don't have one.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's, next?
The last ones are the executive session minutes of December 13th.
Motion. Don't have them in front of me here. I'm not that just, they're not included in Word docs.
Again, they are.
Yeah, they are. Wait a second.
C.
Wait a second.
I'm on C.
The 13th.
I'm on C, I'm hitting, if I do this, it goes to those right there, but if I do this, there is nothing attached.
They're on the bottom.
They're on.
Oh, executive.
No, right there. Which one are we on?
They're not showing for John, but they're showing for mine.
Yeah, I have no attachment on mine.
If you scroll all the way down, they're on the executive.
No, I understand, it's just mine, unlike Lynn's, unlike yours, mine does not have the attachment to it on Word docs.
Yeah. The 13th, isn't that strange?
There just is no attachment to that.
Here they are, if you want.
Yeah, they came up in a different place.
Yes, I did that on purpose. Because they're executive session, and when we do go live.
You told me that yesterday.
Executive session, nobody else can see.
Board of Selectment executive session minutes from Thursday, December 13th, 2018, as recorded.
And is this all zones to be held, or are they?
To be held.
It is, that's why it's listed in the executive.
What's the phrase, to be held until?
Until all matters have been resolved.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or revisions? Is there none, or is that, I'm thinking about it?
None, for the exec.
Anything, nothing else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
That was it, those were the three.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
No, we do the 13th.
We did run it up, we just did a work session.
The 13th?
Work session.
Yes, we did.
Right above it.
I, uh. I have some.
Do you want to go back, go back, we just ran out of time.
What's that?
You want to go back, good.
Yeah, you're going to let me? Sure. On the 13th, on the 13th regular work, what is it, work session? Yeah, work session. Page two. The first paragraph at the end, it's just a matter that, it says easily accessible by being located in one place on the town website.[1647.22]